Facebook and Saipongkebut TV. Again, good morning. Today I call this session to order. Today is Tuesday, January 3, 2023, and this is the fourth day, fourth regular session, Sanadi. And before we proceed further, I would like to ask everyone to please rise for a moment of silent prayer. Thank you. With us on today's Sanada session is our legal counsel, Antonet Villagomez. Our clerk, Joan Caipat, delegation clerk. The sergeant-at-arm is Ben Terlay. On our IT is Jonathan Diaz, along with us is our senior district assistant, Ms. Julienne Taggabel, and as well as the general clerk, Ms. Sanchez. And with us in the gallery, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for joining us. Mayor Edom Pia Don of Tinian and Nagiguan Municipality, and the legal counsel, Ms. Kimberlin King Heinz, along with the mayor's office CEO, Mr. Alan Perez. Thank you for joining us. At this time, I would like to ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Chairman Cruz.
Here.
Senator Hafshinider.
Aye.
Senator King Neighbors.
Here.
Representative Sanicolas. Mr. Chairman, we have three members present, one member absent.
Thank you, clerk. With three members present, we have the necessary number to proceed with this Sanada session. However, Representative Sanicolas is excused for this Sanada session. Next on our order of business, we now would like to entertain line item C, public comments. Any member in the gallery that is willing to come forward to make comments on today's Sanadi Order of Business, please do so. But before you proceed, please state your name for the record. None. This time, we move down to line item. Or I will take that back. I would like to, before entertaining line item D, I would like to recognize the floor leader for the appropriate motion for to I would like to recognize a floor leader for the appropriate motion for
Thank you.
any items that we have in hand to include in this order of business. Recognize floor leader.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to offer motion to suspend pertinent rules to include into today's agenda under line item G, message from the governor, Governor Communication 22-15.
Second. There's a motion for suspension of rules and was seconded to include Governor's Communication 22-15. All in favor, that motion say aye. Oppose, nay. Motion carries. Governor's Communication 22-15 is placed under messages from the governor. At this time, I would like to entertain line item C, public comments. None. Line item D, adoption of journal. Recognize clerk.
Well, the floor leader, Mr. Chairman.
Recognize floor leader.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have two adoptions, journals for adoption today. Tinian and Nagiguan Legislative Delegation Journal, number 22-13, third day, fourth regular session, dated December 15, 2022, as well as today's session journal, which will be indicated as 22-14, fourth day, fourth regular session, Sanadi. So move.
Second. The motion was offered by floor leader Neighbors on Tinian and Nagiguan Legislative Delegation Journal, number 22-13, third day, fourth regular session, December 15, 2022, and also for today's Sanada session, Journal number 22-14. Any second? Further discussion? Ready? All in favor of that motion offered by floor leader Neighbors, say aye. Oppose, nay. Motion carries. Tinian and Nagiguan Legislative Delegation Journal, number 22-13 and 22-14 is hereby adopted. Line item E, introduction of local bill. Clerk.
Mr. Chairman, we have one House Local Bill, number 2244, to an appropriation of $344,000 from revenues collected from poker fees in the second senatorial district and for other purposes. Introduced by Representative Patrick Sanicolas.
Thank you, clerk. Discussion on this local bill. Recognize Secretary of Sanider.
I return the motion back to you, Mr. Chairman, or the floor back to you. I don't have any comment.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Ready? Line item F, introduction of local resolution. Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have one TLD Resolution, number 2010, to express sincere gratitude and pay tribute to Captain Kimberly B. Hafshinider for her selfless service as the Indo-Pacific Command Lieutenant to the Commonwealth of the Northern Mariana Islands and as to the first female Air Force officer from the island of Tinian, serving a historic and vital role in support of U.S. national security interests and the commitment of partnership presence and military readiness. Introduced by Senator Francisco Q. Cruz and sponsored by the committee as a whole.
Thank you, clerk. Discussion. Can I call for short recess? Short recess. Now, I would like to recognize floor leader Neighbors.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to offer a motion to place TAOD Resolution, number 22-10, on today's resolution calendar for adoption.
Second. There's a motion offered by floor leader Neighbors to place Tinian and Nagiguan Legislative Delegation Resolution, number 22-10, on our resolution calendar and was seconded. All in favor, that motion say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Resolution number 22-10 is hereby placed on our resolution calendar. Line item G, messages from the governor. Clerk.
Mr. Chairman, we have one Governor's Communication, 2215, signing to Law House Local Bill 2237, substitute one into Tinian Local Law 22-11.
Line item H, messages from the mayor of Tinian and Nagiguan. Clerk.
Mr. Chairman, we have one mayor's communication, number 22-9.
Discussion. Ready? Line item I, messages from the Tinian and Nagiguan Municipal Council. Clerk.
Mr. Chairman, we have one TMC Communication, number 22-8.
Discussion. Ready? Line item J, reports and communications from each of department and agency, none. Line item K, House of Representatives, communication, clerk.
We have two, Mr. Chairman. House Communication, 22-21 and 22-22.
Discussion. Recognize floor leader Neighbors.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There being no objections from the members, I would like to offer a motion to place House Local Bill 22-44 on today's book calendar for action. So move.
Second. There's a motion to place House Communication, number 22-21 in reference to House Local Bill, number 22-44. Discussion. Clerk, call the roll on that.
Senator Hafshinider. Senator King Neighbors. Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, all three members voted yes.
Thank you, clerk. With three members voted yes, House Communication, number 22-21, in reference to local bill, number 22-44, is placed on bill calendar for action. Line item L, Senate Communication, none. Line item M, delegation matters. Clerk.
Mr. Chairman, we have seven. Delegation matters, number 2279 to 22-89, 85.
Discussion. Discussion? Ready? Thank you. Line item N, Miscellaneous Communication.
Mr. Chairman, we have one Miscellaneous Communication number twenty-two twenty-six.
Discussion? Ready? Since none on line item O, P, Q, and R, I mean R, let's move down to or line item R, Resolution Calendar. Recognize Flow Leader Neighbors.
Uh thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh we have one resolution on today's calendar for action. Uh TAOD Resolution twenty-two dash ten to express sincere gratitude and pay tribute to Captain Kimberly B. Hoff Schneider for her selfless service as the Indo-Pacific Command liaison to the Commonwealth of the Northern Mariana Islands and as the first female officer from the island of Tinian, serving a historic and vital role in the support of the U.S. national security interests and commitment of partnership presence and military readiness. Mr. Chairman, the members, I move for its adoption.
There's a motion for the adoption of uh Tanyan Agiguan Legislative Delegation Resolution number twenty-two, twenty-two dash ten. And this is to express sincere gratitude and pay tribute to Captain Kimberly B. Hoff Schneider for her selfless service as the Indo-Pacific Command liaison to the Commonwealth of the Northern Mariana Islands and the first female Air Force officer on the island of Tinian, serving a historic and vital role in support of the U.S. national security interests and the commitment of partnership presence and military readiness. And I thank the members for also co-sponsoring the uh this uh resolution. I would like to call uh or ask the clerk, please to call the roll for this uh adoption of this resolution.
Senator Hoff Schneider?
Abstained, Mr. Chairman. She's uh my uh.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Under discussion, uh recognize Secretary of Senator. Clerk, is that a?
Senator King Neighbors?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, two members voted yes, one abstained, one abstained.
Thank you. Uh can I go for short recess? And we're, we're under line item line item uh R, and this is the uh the, for the adoption of the uh Resolution number twenty-two dash ten, and I believe we, we have voted on that with two voting on the resolution. Tanyan Agiguan Legislative Deleg- Delegation Resolution number twenty-two dash ten is hereby passed the delegation. Under line item S, Bill Calendar, recognize Flow Leader.
Uh thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have um House Local Bill twenty-two dash forty-four to appropriate three hundred and forty-four thousand dollars of revenues collected from poker fees in the second senatorial district and for other purposes. Mr. Chairman and members, I move for its passage.
Second. There's a motion offered by Flow Leader Neighbors on House Local Bill number twenty-two dash forty-four. And was seconded. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Recognize uh President of Senator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I of, I would like to offer a uh amendment to the House Local Bill. And I believe we all have copies of it. I do wanna reference though that uh I wanna direct the members' attention to line eight on page two. Line eight on page two. Under item D, it should reflect five thousand to the Tinian Athletic Sports Association instead of amateur. Okay? And uh everything stands. I so move for my amendment.
There's a motion offered by President of Senator, um page two, line, line eight, and that's to change the amateur to athletic, athletic, and was seconded.
Mr. Chairman, for clarification?
Recognize uh Secretary or President of Senator.
Thank you. Uh just to reiterate the, my motion, my motion is to, to offer this amendment and a technical adjustment on the, the uh citation to reflect athletic. So the, the motion for amendment uh that I, I saw offered is still uh uh in, in line with your call, whether to adopt or not. It in, it in, it, it covers the uh, the other items. I hope that's clarification, council, if you wanna make that clarification.
In other words, that, 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 that word is in line with the communication from this uh, uh nonprofit uh association?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's.
Thank you, thank you for seeing that uh discrepancy on this uh legislation and making correction on that.
You're welcome, Mr. Chairman. This is my job.
So uh, recognize uh Flow Leader. Short recess. Recognize uh President of Senator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and again uh thank you for allowing uh me to uh restate my motion, and that is the, on House Local Bill twenty-two forty-four, I offer a uh an amendment to reflect uh page two starting with item one, all the way to item eight. And nothing follows, Mr. Chairman, since everyone has a copy of it. And again, while I'm offering that motion on line eight, instead of Tinian Amateur, it's Tinian Athletic Sports Association. I so move. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh President, can I, can I do this first uh? Uh vote to, to support the withdrawal of your first motion, and then we go with to the second uh office, that, is that the appropriate counsel? We did vote on the, the first motion, and he withdrew, so can we? Short recess. Can we? We're back from recess. And uh I believe we're, we're entertaining the uh motion offered by uh President of Senator on, on House Local Bill number twenty-two dash forty-four. Any second to that motion and was seconded? Clerk, please call the roll on that uh motion offered uh by uh President of Senator.
Senator Hoff Schneider?
Yeah.
Senator King Neighbors?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, all three members voted yes.
We've three members voted yes on the uh motion offered by uh President of Senator amending our local, House Local Bill number twenty-two dash forty-four is hereby passed the delegation. Now, I would like to uh recognize uh the main motion on House Local Bill twenty-two dash forty-four. Uh clerk, please call the roll.
Senator Hoff Schneider?
Yes.
Senator King Neighbors?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, all three members voted yes.
With three members voted yes, House Local Bill number twenty-two dash forty-four in a form of draft one passes the delegation. At this time, recognize Flow Leader.
Uh thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um I would also like to offer a motion. We have Senate Local Bill twenty-two dash fourteen to ban the use of, the, to ban the use of plastic checkout bags in the second senatorial district and for other purposes. Mr. Chairman and members, I move for its passage.
Second. There's a motion offered by Flow Leader Neighbors for the passage of Senate Local Bill number twenty-two dash fourteen, and this is to ban the use of uh plastic check, checkout bags in the second senatorial district and for other purposes. Clerk, please call the roll.
Schneider?
Yes.
Senator King Neighbors? Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, all three members voted yes.
With three members voted yes, and Local Bill number twenty-two dash fourteen passes the delegation. Flow Leader. Short recess. Recesses? Recognize Flow Leader Neighbors.
Uh thank you, Mr. Chairman. If there being no objections from the members, uh I would like to move to file the remaining uh bills on our bill calendar.
Second. There's a motion offered by Flow Leader Neighbors that all pending local bills that are on bill calendar are to be filed and was seconded. Clerk, please call the roll.
Again.
Senator King Neighbors?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, all three members voted yes.
We've three members voted yes for all pending local bills on calendar are hereby filed, passes the delegation. Flow Leader. Okay, under line item T, Miscellaneous? Anyone have anything on, under miscellaneous?
Mr. Chairman, I, I just wanted to uh thank you for.
Recognize uh President of Senator.
I just wanted to take this a moment to uh, because this is gonna be the last delegation session, to uh thank you for your, for taking the helm of this body and um for being able to navigate forth and pushing some legislative actions that benefited uh our community, our community of Tinian. Um, and I know there's a lot of uh, sometimes it's time-consuming and all that, but uh with your determination to ensure that the legislation before us or any other documents uh is able to pass through the senate, come into the delegation, and, and being enacted into law to continue assisting our community that we upheld our commitment to. So congratulations on your leadership, G twenty-second uh delegation, and I look forward to working with you uh in the next uh, uh term.
Thank you, uh President of Senator. I really appreciate that uh very humble words uh
Mr. Chairman.
towards my leadership.
One more, one more thing, Mr. Chairman. I also wanted to.
Recognize President of Senator.
I wanted to recognize also Mayor O'Don and uh the Municipal Council for they uh working with us and the community of Tinian for their uh patience as we navigate through with and doing uh our job, our responsibility as members of this uh body. So thank you so much. I'll be back.
Thank you again, uh President of Senator. Another member? Ready? I also like to uh say a few. Would like to express my gratitude and appreciation to the municipality mayor of Tinian Agiguan, Mayor O'Don, and your staff, CEO and your counsel for always uh, you know, working with us, Tinian Local Delegation, in how to address a pressing issue that affecting our community in regards to funding. And I appreciate the, your passion also in uh, in understanding the delegation's uh concern in regards to uh distribution of funds. I appreciate also the people of Tinian for your patience and understanding. I understand that that with our limited resources, uh you know, we will do our very best to address other uh uh critical and uh essential uh matters that pertains to our community needs. So again, I, I appreciate all the uh, the patient understanding. And most especially to the uh, the LB staff, the legal counsel, uh consultant, number Munis, uh the uh delegation clerk, Francis Kaipat, the uh older sergeant on arms, Toise, Terlahian, Sergeant Santos, the IT, the General Tana, Diaz, and Mr. Komatsu. And uh our hard-working senior administrative uh, administrative uh staff, uh Ms. Jolene, for very supportive. staff, Ms. Julen, for very supportive under the delegation. I know you've been working very hard on both sides of the aisle, the Senate and the delegation. I appreciate all your guidance and assistance. And also for our new club journal, thank you for supporting the delegation in making sure that the journal are ready for action when comes delegation session. Again, on Donklo Susmasi, for everyone who participated and continue to serve this body, the Tinian Local Delegation. Under line item U, announcement. None? At this time, I would like to recognize the Flow Leader for the appropriate motion for adjournment SanaDai.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman and members, I officially like to offer a motion to adjourn today's Tinian Nagiguan Legislative Delegation Session, fourth day, fourth regular session, twenty twenty-three. SanaDai. So move.
Second.
There's a motion offered by Flow Leader Neighbors and was seconded for adjournment SanaDai. All in favor of that motion, say aye. Oppose and nay? This Tinian Nagiguan Legislative Delegation stand adjourn SanaDai.